Okay, thank you. Please be seated. This is the 19th meeting of City Council. This is a special meeting devoted solely to the approval of the budget and taking the recommendations from the Budget Committee. The City of London is situated on the traditional lands of the Anshinabek, Hodnashoni, Lenit-Pewak, and Atawandron. We honor and respect the history, languages, cultures, and diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. The City of London is currently home to many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit today. As representatives of the people of the City of London, we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work in this territory. As well, the City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489 extension 2425. Now, we do not have a national anthem singer today, but what we have queued up, given us a special meeting, is the choir who sung at our original inauguration. So if everybody would like to rise, feel free to join in, or you can listen to their beautiful voices. [Music] Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you. I'll declare conflict on number 18, 3.2, as I'm a member of the LDBA and could potentially apply for a grant that's mentioned in that motion.
Okay. Any other disclosures? All right. Seeing none. We have no recognitions today. Nothing to review in confidential to be considered in public. No closed session. We have no minutes to sign. No communications or petitions for this particular meeting. No motions to which notice was given, which means we can proceed into the budget-related reports, of which you will see a number of them there today. Both the items that were approved by the Budget Committee, as well as much like we did at the multi-year budget, the items that may have been considered but were not approved, which can be packaged in either an "it being noted" clause, or if colleagues at that point would like to reconsider one of those, that they could do that at that time. Otherwise, they'll be taken care of in an "it being noted" that these were amendments considered in the budget process. And then, at the end, we'll have one bylaw to pass, and that'll bring us through. So I'm going to have Budget Chair Pelosi present the multiple Budget Committee-related reports, and she'll provide some more guidance on how she's going to walk us through this. So thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to put each report on the floor separate, just to keep things for the ease of expediency and clarity as we go forward. So I'm going to put the entire, if there's no one looking to pull anything, just the fourth report of the Budget Committee. This was our October 29th meeting, in which staff just, and the mayor presented the budget to us. So if no one wants one, two, or three pulled from that, I will put the rest on the floor.
Okay, so we'll put all of 8.1 on the floor. And again, this is just something that we have to receive as part of the process. So go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. The only request I've had from behind the scenes is just looking to finance, to remind us, as we start today's discussions, on page 24 of your budget package was next steps, realizing once we pass it today, there's veto powers and different day timelines of just going to Mr. Murray and his team, just to remind us of those processes and timelines before we get into deliberations today.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. Yes, I will refer Council to page 24 of your budget document. The next step in the process, after approval of Council amendments to the mayor's proposed budget, is then a 10-day period, a period of up to 10 days, for the mayor to provide written veto of Council's amendments. I will note that the mayor has the ability to shorten that timeline, and in developing the schedule for this year, I believe the mayor had committed to providing a decision on vetoing by December 2nd at the latest. So that will then allow us to feed into the next steps in the process and align with existing Council meetings. So once we get through the mayor's veto period, that would then open up a 15-day period for Council to potentially override the mayor's veto with a two-thirds majority, in the event that Council wishes to do so. Thank you.
Okay. So what we've got on the floor is all of 8.1. I don't know if there's any discussion on any of that. Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, go ahead, Budget Chair Pelosi.
Thank you. This, what next one is 8.2, the fifth report of the Budget Committee. This was our public participation meeting on November 19th. I will put the entire report on the floor.
Okay, this is just the public participation meeting on the fifth report? That's moved. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Press votes yes.
Closing the vote motion carries 15 to zero.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This moves us along to the sixth report of the Budget Committee. As noted earlier, items 1 to 12, I can handle those separate. Happy to put those on the floor, realizing as we get into other items that I know a couple need to be pulled. Or do you want me to pull them now? At your disposal.
I think we can do 1 to 12 first. Those are the things that we ended up approving. If anybody would like any of those 1 to 12 dealt with separately, we could. Or we could proceed with voting on those. Or anybody like anything from 1 to 12 separate? Okay, looks like that's okay. So any discussion then on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open items 1 to 12 for voting.
Noting Counselor Trosso indicated verbally yes. Closing the vote motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Under the other items, as the mayor said, this was the "it being noted" section, that these were discussed during our budget deliberations, but they did not make it into the budget as for amendments. Number 18 will need to be dealt with separate as Counselor Lehman has declared a public conflict. I wasn't personally made aware about any others, but I know the mayor might have been.
So I was just talking to the clerk procedurally. Given this is part of an "it being noted, these were discussed" clause, it would be, so we'll have a separate "it being noted" for the 18, number 18. We'll have an "it being noted" for the others. If someone would like to revisit any of these, the easiest thing is to indicate now that you would like to pull, you would like to potentially pull it out. And that would require a mover and a seconder to take an action on it. If there was no seconder, let's say, for example, but it would just go back, and we would consider the "it being noted" vote on whatever items they were. So just because it's pulled doesn't mean we're going to put it on the floor again and just have the opportunity to put it on the floor, but it would require a mover and a seconder for any one of these items, because they are not being presented by the Budget Chair. They would be being moved as new items, since they did not make it through the committee. So, but we'll deal with all those first. That way, we can package all the "it being noted" back together. So is there anything other than 18 that colleagues would like us to consider separately? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I did send a message saying I'd like 21 pulled.
Okay, so I think the best way to proceed, Chair, just based on the advice of the clerks, is we could deal with the 21 first, because we'll see if the Counselor wants to move a motion and have a seconder on that. If that does not have a seconder, or is not successful, we can package everything back up into the "it being noted," because it was, it would have been noted that it was a discussion. So we'll deal with that item first. That way, we can get that out of the way. We can kind of clean everything up all at once at the end. So we'll move to item 21, and I'll go to Counselor Stevenson to potentially move a, either putting it back on the floor, or making the same motion, or whatever it is that you're intending to do with it.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to put it back on the floor if there's a seconder to discuss a potential 2% reduction of the 2025 tax levy increase for next year.
Okay, I'll look to see if there's a seconder for that. Okay, I don't see a seconder, so...
I don't see one either, so I'll stand alone. Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll go back to the, considering the "it being noted." So we're going to do all of the "it being noted" with the exception of 18? Okay, let's do 18 first, the Counselor Lehman's. So we'll put, Budget Chair will put the "it being noted" that 18 was discussed as a possible amendment on the floor by the Chair. Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll open that for voting then.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 2 with one recuse.
Okay, now there'll be an "it being noted" with all of the other items together, for the same reason, with no conflict. So that's put on the floor by the Budget Chair. Any discussion on this "it being noted"? Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Oh, sorry. I will speak to 21. And although there wasn't a seconder and no willingness by Council to discuss this further, I listened intensely last Friday to my colleagues. And as you know, I was a professional accountant for 25 years. And the thought that taking $16 million temporarily from a discretionary reserve fund, of which we have over $1.2 billion, the thought that the sky will fall and our credit rating will collapse by this temporary motion to give back to taxpayers their tax savings at a time when they are really hurting. Reserve funds are and may be used to maintain controlled property tax rates. They can be used and converted to other uses with Council's approval. It's right in our financial statements. So I guess my question is, if, I have a question to staff. If reserve funds are available to maintain controlled property tax rates, does the City of London have sector reserve? And if so, how much is in it?
I don't know if that's going to be Mr. Murray, Ms. Barbour.
Through you, your worship. So in general terms, reserve funds do have specific purposes that govern them. They are laid out in the reserve fund bylaws for those specific reserve funds. Council can choose to use those for different purposes, upon Council's resolution to do so. However, they are intended for specific purposes as laid out in those specific reserve funds. With respect to the question of, is there a reserve fund specifically for tax levy mitigation? There is not a reserve fund, a reserve specifically for that reason. However, we do have our operating budget contingency reserve. However, we do have our operating budget contingency reserve. Now, that is intended for multiple purposes. That provides working capital for the corporation to allow us to pay the bills, that provides liquidity to manage the ups and downs of our cash flows throughout the year. So, it is not intended as a tax levy mitigation tool in general terms. Currently, the operating budget contingency reserve has a balance of approximately, an uncommitted balance of approximately $37 million, give or take.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, thank you very much. Taxpayers are concerned. They are very concerned about the increasing property tax rates. It's, you know, we're into our second year of over 7%. Our discretionary reserves are currently, or at the end of 2023, totaled $1.2 billion. In 2014, they were $400 million. In 2018, they were $663 million. In 2022, they were $1.1 billion. They went up by over $100 million in 2023. The reserve funds are generated investment income of $27 million in 2023 and $17 million in 2022. $16 million is half of last year's surplus. Reducing the reserve fund for an unfunded liability of $313 million, we're, we're way, way short of meeting that liability. So, when we say we can't take money from there, because we owe that money, we don't even have set aside even half, or, you know, approximately half of what we actually owe. I appreciate people's comments and the apprehension to deplete savings, but these are the tax dollars of residents that we put away with their willingness into our reserves. We have escalating debt servicing costs and escalating debt that, when we looked at the budget in 2023, in December of 2023, and then we passed our multi-year budget, our debt servicing went from $27 million a year to $90 million a year, that's what we first saw, to $27 million to $144 million a year. Our debt doubled in the projections from $397 million to $801 million, and we have not discussed it. So, I will ask to, to staff, is there, do we know at all what the debt servicing pressure is going to do to subsequent years? Is it, is it reasonable to say, you know, that we're looking at 2% a year for the next few years, just in debt servicing increases?
I'll go to Mr. Murray. Counselor Trosso, I hear, I see your hand up, and I'll get to you on the speakers list.
It's a point of order.
Okay, if it's a point of order, well, I'll deal with that now. Go ahead, Counselor.
I, I just, I just recall that we just brought this to discussion, and there was not a second. Are we not now debating an item for which there was not a second?
Yes, Counselor, so, I'm trying to provide a leeway here that we discussed in the previous multi-year budget, and that is, there is no motion on the floor, but there is a recognition that we discussed these amendments on the floor. The Counselor has chosen to provide some commentary on that particular amendment and asking some questions of staff. You're right, we will not be making an alternate decision, but it is, it is something that, a process that we tried to set up to allow for as much discussion as possible last year, that is why we are where we are. So, the Counselor's got under two minutes left. I'm gonna let her proceed with her comments, and then anybody else who needs to make any comments on these other items can, but, but we're considering just the "it being noted" piece. But it is actually a motion on the floor, so I'm gonna allow the Counselor to speak to it. And I'll go to Mr. Murray to answer the question.
Thank you. And through you, your worship, so, I believe the Counselor is referring to page 86 of the budget document for 2025. So, the figures that the Counselor has quoted, that represents total tax-supported debt servicing costs. So, included in that, however, is debt servicing costs that are not tax-funded. So, for example, the city services reserve funds are DC debt, that is included in those figures. Other debt, specifically debt that's funded through other sources of revenue, for example, the municipal accommodation tax, that is included in those figures as well. So, the figures that the Counselor is referring to does include other things that will not impact the property tax levy into the future. Having said that, the future debt servicing costs are projected to go up, and this is based on our current forecast. We will be recasting this forecast again as part of the 2026 annual update and as part of the 2027 annual update as well. So, there, there may be adjustments into the future. So, but, having said that, the, the projections are that debt will, and debt servicing will increase over the coming years. However, we are fortunate to have a number of good policy tools at our disposal to chip away and work away at that debt, so that we don't have to issue that debt and those servicing costs don't come to fruition. So, specifically, I'll refer to the surplus deficit policy, which allocates 50% of any year-end surplus to reduce authorized but unissued debt. Similarly, the assessment growth policy, any unallocated assessment growth in any particular year, 50% of that goes to reduce authorized but unissued debt as well. So, we do have tools in our toolbox, if you will, to chip away at this and to prevent, you know, the issuance of that debt and the subsequent servicing costs. Thank you.
Counselor, you got about 1:45 left.
Okay, thank you very much. And I do appreciate, there's, I've had a lot of questions, and I've been getting a lot of answers from the finance group over the last week or so, and I really appreciate Londoners have been pleading to me, I don't know about the other counselors, but the residents in my ward have been pleading to say we cannot afford these high property tax rate increases year after year, and that is what is projected if we do not change. Things are not going to get less expensive unless we decide to take a really hard, serious look at the programs and services that have been compounding over the last decade through the decisions of previous councils that may have made sense, I'm sure they did make sense at the time. But upon reflection now, with the fiscal pressures that we are under, that we have chosen into through taking on the debt that we have approved through this multi-year budget, for what we are handing to the next term of council, I feel very much that it is our responsibility to take a much deeper dive than what was done in the SWOG Committee. Although that too had good intentions, it did not realize the results that the Londoners that I speak to...
30 seconds.
...are expecting. So, how will these large and escalating debt servicing costs be absorbed in future budgets? How will they? If we are going to need to take a deep dive into programs, services, and overhead costs eventually, why not do it in 2025? 2026 will be an election year, and 2027 will be the start of another multi-year budget process for '28 to '20, to '2031. If not us, then who? If not now, then when?
Okay, I put myself on the list next, so I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. I will take the chair and recognize Mayor Morgan.
So, thank you, colleagues. It's not my intent to get into a significant debate about the other items here, but I will take the opportunity to provide some commentary on the comments that were just made by the Counselor, of course, through the presiding officer. I don't, I don't disagree that we need to take a hard look at the budget. I think the SWOG Committee has an opportunity and mandate to continue to do that. I think that this council has the ability to continue to do that, and I do not think that those comments have anything to do with the motion that was proposed. You know, there's a reason that there wasn't a seconder for this. It's not because members of this council don't want to find savings for taxpayers. I, I think absolutely every single member of this council would like to do that. But, the motion on the floor was a very specific way to do that, and so I just want to clearly articulate what I heard, because I know the Counselor put out some information on social media, I certainly received the emails, and I can tell you what my response was. I was very transparent about what the motion would do. Yes, it would reduce the 2025 tax burden by 2%, but it was not a sustainable cut. It would go back up by an additional 2% in 2026. And when people were told that, they said, well, that's going the wrong direction, because going from 6.4 to 8.4 in 2026 is absolutely the wrong direction. We had 8.7 last year through tax policy and education tax that came down to 7.7. We had 8.7 this year through the budget I tabled and the work of this council, which I commend you for, down to 7.3, and when we do tax policy and education taxes in the spring, hopefully that'll come down more. Going the other direction in 2026 is not anything any of us want to do. So, yes, I think we all want to find tax savings, but it is the way that was described, looking seriously into programs, finding sustainable cuts that, that transcend the years, not an artificial one year down, the next year back up. That simply kicks the can down the road that year, and that is not something that Londoners want us to do. They want us to find long-term, sustainable tax savings to the budget, so that they get the savings each and every year, like the work in service review that our staff does, who again found another $6 million through that process. And through the course, and that's on top of the course of what they found at the tabling of the multi-year budget, which was, I believe, $10 million and $3 million one time. Through the course of that service review process over the last decade, they've carved over $50 million out of the base budget of the municipal council, equalling savings of well over $200 million over that time period. You know, that's the kind of sustainable savings that Londoners expect us to dive into, and it is not the easiest thing to find. You've got to make tough decisions, you've got to dig deep, you've got to take the time to go through those departments. It's exactly why this council supported boards and commissions, who, remember, when we tabled the multi-year budget, civic administration's budget was at 2.2%, plus the capital financing portion. But if we provide training to boards and commissions, we can help them try to find savings in their budgets and continue along the lines of the good work that our staff have done as well. So, make no mistake, this council, and I think every single member, is committed to trying to bring the budget down, find savings, be as efficient as possible with the resources that we have, while achieving the goals in our strategic plan. But we're not going to do that in a way that is artificial and not sustained, and only kicks the problem down the road one year, and pushes us in the wrong direction in 2026, up to 8.4. That's like going back to where we started in the multi-year budget process, and I think we need to continue on the trend line that we're on, not return to the start of the race.
Thank you, your worship. I will return the chair to you, and I have no other speakers on the list.
Counselor Lehman, and then Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start off by saying that of all the motions in front of us, this one was one that I was sorely tempted to support. As the mayor said, who amongst us don't want to see a tax cut? People, we realize, people are really being challenged right now with, with cost of living. Of course, we believe that. I could have, knowing, I knew this motion would probably fail, given the, the results of the last vote in, in our working group or committee. But would that have been the right thing to do, to say, well, you know, and I could say, well, I voted to cut your taxes by 2%, knowing full well that, that this would have lost, but I couldn't do it. You know, I gotta be true to, to what I believe, and I agree with the mayor in that this is the wrong way to go about finding savings for London taxpayers. Using unfunded liability account, that's easy. We can just, why not make it 3%, 4%? The idea, I imagine, was that if we took $16 million out, why our feet would have been to the fire to find $16 million next year to find it. If the Counselor had come to us and said, listen, here's $16 million in savings through this action, this action, this action, this action, I would have been pleased to consider that strongly, to see what we can do. But I can't just go the easy route in saying, let's just take it from this unfunded liability, because as the name implies, it's a liability that, that we owe at some point. We've always been a good fiscally managed institution. I think our AAA credit rating, regardless of what term of council has been, has been to protect that and to lean on our extremely talented financial team to make sure we do not stray from that discipline. Now, that doesn't absolve us from still getting there. Let's, let's work next term, starting tomorrow, on making headroads and finding that $16 million for the property taxpayers, in true ways and true savings, as opposed to just taking it from a certain unfunded liability account. Because what we're doing, as the mayor said, is, sure, it would be a temporary feel-good 2% down, but man, we get hit next year when that 2% is added back in. So, let's keep the direction we're going, but let's work hard to find savings for our taxpayers of London and get that tax rate down further. Thank you.
Counselor Frank, and then Counselor Cuddy.
Thank you, and I'll be quick, because I didn't plan on speaking either, but felt I had to add my two cents regarding this. And I just wanted to remind folks, but I'm sure, you know, no one actually needs any reminders, but when we're complaining about tax pressures, the police budget was just under half of the entire increase for the last two years, 5% of 8.7% last year, 2% of the 7.4% this year. And so, if we want to find savings, we could have supported a reduction in our biggest cost driver, but we didn't. And regardless, I also agree with the mayor and Counselor Lehman, that if we want to find reductions, we need to be looking for real places to make real reductions and not artificial ones. So, thanks.
Counselor Cuddy, and then Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I want to take a moment to thank my colleague for, for bringing this forward and for finding an opportunity to try to save taxpayers money. We all want to do that, as you mentioned, your worship. And, you know, as Counselor Lehman said, you know, while there are ways to do it, this is not the way to do it. Playing jeopardy with our credit rating is not the way to do it. I, I've had numerous conversations with Mr. Murray. Our credit rating is critical to us, critical to the city, critical to us saving money for the future. You know, I serve on SWOG, which, which, your worship, you put together and you asked our Budget Chief to, to chair. That's an opportunity for us to continue forward and to find savings. It's my, my plan to keep on working in that effort. You know, your worship, my, my constituents are hardworking, many are hourly laborers, many are retirees on pension. This is hard on them, but I will dedicate the next year to working for my constituents, to work for the constituents of the city, to find tax savings. Thank you.
Counselor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I too was not going to speak to this, but I will, and I appreciate the conversation here, wanting to reduce the tax levy, because it is quite high. I do hear from residents that we need to reduce that. What I hear is that we need to reduce it through the police budget, that was the highest cost driver in our tax levy. And I want to reiterate, what I'm hearing from residents is the police budget being high.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. I'm gonna try not to repeat too much of what I've heard, because I agree with much of what was said, although respectfully, I'm not hearing from my constituents reduce the police budget. I'm hearing from my constituents that they appreciate seeing more officers on the street doing traffic stops, that they appreciate the fact that the 911 response times are coming down. So, while that not, may not be what other counselors are hearing, and I will say, I don't take 45 speakers in, in the gallery at a PPM as being representative of half a million people, any more than I take 43 responses on the Get Involved survey as being representative of that many people. Yes, those people came and shared their thoughts with us, but we had people share their thoughts with us in many other ways as well. What I will say, though, is that I agree with the fact that we need to find permanent opportunities for savings and efficiencies. But I will tell you, trying to find $16 million in one year for next year would have one result, drastic service cuts in some area in one way, shape, or form. And I don't want to be in a position of telling residents in July, sorry, we're not gonna have swimming lessons at our community pools this summer, because we reduced the budget and we, we can't find the savings, or that come the end of October, sorry, your next garbage collection is gonna be January, because we just didn't budget properly, we can't find the savings, and now our choice is send you a second bill or eliminate a service. I recall very clearly how long it took the city to recover from an artificial 0% tax increase under a former council, who were playing to the, we have to keep taxes down. While I'm having an honest conversation with my residents, cities are not immune to inflationary pressures, and we are not allowed... pressures, and we are not allowed to run deficits. We must run balanced operating budgets annually. Property taxes are never going to go down if we want to continue to provide services because fuel in our vehicles, paying our employees, keeping the lights on in our facilities, the cost of doing all of those things continues to rise. And I agree that the last two years of budget hikes have been steep for homeowners. I'm a homeowner myself. I see it on my own property taxes. But I will tell you this, just 1/4% interest rate cut by the Bank of Canada this year did more for savings on a household mortgage renewal than what is going to be impacted by these property taxes. And really, if we want to see property taxes come down, I would encourage residents to write their MPPs and to write the premier and say, "Instead of sending us a $200 check to cover our property taxes for one year, transfer that $3 billion to municipalities year over year so that they can provide the services that we ask them to provide," because that is the real issue here. While we have other levels of government offering to send people checks that would cover your property taxes for this year, they're not transferring the funding to municipalities to pay for the services and programs that you expect us to deliver. So if you really want your property taxes to come down, write your MPs and MPPs and tell them it's time for municipalities to get a new fiscal deal, because we cannot continue to do everything on property taxes while they try to buy your votes by handing out rebate checks on the verge of an election year.
Counselor Prible and then McAllister.
Thank you, and I just, I'm going to look into the future more, and I really hope that, I know someone said tomorrow, I don't think it's going to be tomorrow, but honestly, January is second at our leadership team, and hopefully with us as well, but certainly leadership team is going to revisit really deeply all the programs that we offer, because again, if I look at $2 million, we are looking at kind of one, sorry, $60 million, it's like 1.2% of our annual budget. And I really hope that we are going to, as a team, look into it and really deliver the results starting next year to decrease the taxes even lower than they are. And the other part is economic growth, and I really think that that's an area that we need to improve on so we really diversify our industry, our businesses, our commerce, because we really need to be with all the pressures that are ahead of us. We need to be ready, and we need to be ready for these challenges. So that's looking into the future, and I'm really looking forward to our senior staff to attack this and give us some proposals starting January, how we are going to revisit it, how we are going to look into it, and how we are going to deliver the results that half a million of Londoners want us to deliver. Thank you.
Counselor McAllister and then Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, through the chair. Along the same lines as the deputy mayor said, I think one of the things throughout the budget process that always strikes me is, yes, municipal services have grown over time, but I really view that as a byproduct of the downloading that's happened, especially with the province. I've also heard the comments made in terms of prioritization, and I would say the two things that I often hear, especially when budget discussions come up, housing and homelessness are still top of mind, and those are responsibilities that I think the province still needs to come to the table with some real dollars. I do thank the federal government for the money that was provided in terms of the money for homelessness. I know they were waiting in terms of the province to come to the table. We're still waiting for that. I want us to be whole. I know it's something AMO stresses a lot. We want to see that money flow from the province. I don't fully expect everything to be re-uploaded, but if things are going to be downloaded, I would like the money to come with it, because as a municipality, and as was being said by a number of my colleagues, I do not think the property tax is the appropriate place to be funding a lot of housing and healthcare dollars, to be honest with you. So for me, I want to say thank you to all my colleagues through this budget discussions. I know it's been a while, and we keep having these tough discussions, but I also want there to be accountability with other levels of government. We are one player, but we need everyone to come to the table with money to show results for the city. Thank you.
Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. So first, I want to take a moment to say thank you to the Budget Chair, the mayor, and staff for what's in front of us today, but I hear from Londoners as well that they'd like us to do better. So I want to comment first on the unfunded liabilities component of this discussion. First, I want to thank my council colleague for striking a conversation, and it's definitely a conversation we need to continue to keep having. However, I don't think that the savings that are available through the unfunded liabilities are the way to go. When I proposed moving money from reserves to savings at a smaller amount for savings, my colleagues called it a budget bomb, surprised that the same language isn't being used now. Through SWOG, I worked to bring forward $3 million from reserve into multi-year savings that we did see through the mayor's budget. I want to speak globally about some of the amendments that I didn't support that are still here, some including bathroom cleaning in our parks, MLHU increases, downtown London's additional increases that I'm not in full support of, but I supported today in this budget, because I do think that although we are, you know, in these budget committee meetings to have good discussion and debate about the things we do and don't support in the city, when the budget comes forward, we need to do our best to coalesce around the direction that we're heading in and where funding is going. And the reason for that is because the community needs to hear that we're all doing what we can to find savings and efficiencies, but we're also supportive of the programs that we also have and the opportunities that we have in the city currently. But what I'm seeing is not that. What I'm seeing is that we're championing motions in an all-or-nothing standpoint at times, and that is leading to distrust in the public as well. So what I heard today, repeated by many of my colleagues, was that they'd like to see a direction, that staff be given a direction, to find further savings. Staff do that annually through the service review, and those savings have been, as the mayor highlighted, quite considerable. But what I'm hearing is that we want to take additional direction. So I just wanted to ask through the chair whether or not that additional direction would be something that is needed at SWOG at an upcoming meeting, or would the mayor entertain that in his budget going forward?
So I'm happy to address that. So I do think SWOG is a place for these ideas to come to. It's got the full mandate, it's populated with council committee members, it has a process to bring those savings forward, and I absolutely, as you've seen me do in this table budget, respect the discussions and the motions that council has brought forward for consideration in the budget process. And so I think that the direction is there, the structure is there, and I agree with what has been said about the work that our staff is doing, but if Counselors want to have a serious discussion about a program of this municipality, it can start at that committee, receive the support of the wider council, and then the information can come forward on whether or not we want to make that decision together and through the budget process. But there is an opportunity for those tough discussions to happen, and the structure is there, so I would encourage colleagues to use that.
Thank you, and I appreciate that response, and we'll look to do that. So we know the mechanism, and we're hearing from Counselors today that there is that desire, and I'll look to further that work as we move forward on a line-by-line basis as I see and hear that we're looking to do at this time. For now, what's in front of us today I will support, and I want to thank again my colleagues and staff for their work. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the speakers I have on the "it being noted" piece, so we're going to open that "it being noted" clause for approval.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, we got no added reports, no deferred matters. I don't think there's any inquiries related to this special meeting, so it's got to be on a topic related to this. Okay, none, no emergent motions. We have one bylaw to pass, which is the confirming bylaw for this special meeting, which is the standard bylaw we pass every meeting. I'll look for a mover and a seconder for Bill 398. Counselor Cuddy and Deputy Mayor Lewis will open first reading as soon as it's ready.
I vote no.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 1.
Okay, second reading of the confirming bylaw. Same mover and seconder nodding? Yep, so we'll open that. Oh, any discussion on the confirming bylaw? Yes, Counselor Trosso?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to indicate that I, while I didn't speak on the last matter, I just want to make it clear that people can look at our votes from the budget committee to get a sense of where we stand on a lot of things. I'm speaking, I'm speaking now, I'm going to vote no on the overall budget, because while there are a lot of things that are in the budget that I support, there are, is this out of order?
Yeah, well, I just, you're not voting on the overall budget. The confirming bylaw is a bylaw that we pass at the end of each meeting to just confirm that we had a meeting and clean up all the resolutions. It's more of a procedural thing than anything. There is no final vote on the budget, because what we passed today was a series of amendments which changes the budget from the one that I tabled to a budget that now has all of council's amendments attached to it. So that process is over. I think--
Thank you for that. That's exactly the same point I tried to raise during the multi-year budget. So I just, I just wanted it understood that people, when they want to understand where we stand on these different issues, they really need to look at the budget committee. And with that, I'll withdraw my objection based on what you just said.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that. With that, we'll open second reading for voting.
I'll vote yes on this. Trosso?
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 1.
Okay, and mover and seconder on third reading of the confirming bylaw. We'll open that for voting. Same mover and seconder will open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 1.
Okay, and that moves us to adjournment. Before we adjourn, I'm just going to make one comment from the chair. It was indicated by Mr. Murray at the start that I expressed my indication to declare my intent on whether or not to veto any of council's amendments by December 2nd. I can indicate to you today that I have no intention of vetoing any of these, and I will probably proceed with providing that formally in writing with the clerk sooner rather than later to bring the budget into effect. So if I might do that later today, I'll just make sure I know exactly what words to put in writing, and just so colleagues know, you don't have to wait till the second to, I'll just make it clear that I have no intention of vetoing any of the good amendments and the good work that council did through the budget process this year. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. By hand, all those in favor? Any opposed?
That motion carries.
Thank you.